Open the city council meeting, City of Eldridge, Iowa, Monday, August seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, mayor.
Yes.
Before we get started, you don't have a. We don't do.
I believe it's taken to the community center after last meeting.
A little baby.
We've got some small ones, yeah.
Oh, all right.
Oh.
Yeah, but it's not in the.
Right.
That's good.
Yeah.
Here, I'm gonna find this like that.
Definitely. You have to do the um.
Roll call.
Blackwell.
President.
Chief.
Present.
Peters.
Present.
Doctor.
Present.
Oh.
Present.
Let's leave. This one is a big party. I apply to the United States of America, and it is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in justice. Put the promotion to approve the agenda.
So move it.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Peters, approve the agenda.
That's if there are no additions to it.
Extraction.
Do that, boy.
Add more. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names, ayes, ahs. Comment. Is there anybody in the public that has a comment they'd like to make? Sure, go ahead, state your name, sir.
My name is James Rice, a little South Knight there in Eldridge. But I speak to the sidewalk waivers, if you will. I don't know if they have an end date. I don't know if they go into. But regardless, uh, at least things that can grow up here is most of the rural term, you know, the business city. The concern that I have, and then I'll just use South Knight for instance. Um, I see a lot of traffic walking on the west sidewalk going north. Uh, it's um, young moms with. Some children, some kids, there's adults, all ages walking on the sidewalk. If they're going to. Cody Road Restaurant and Hardee's. In their own big east sidewalk, they're crossing the aisle street. They have to walk on the grass. Cross the parking lot of that corner, in the grass, potentially against the sidewalk, with Cody Roads on to Hardee's. If you take mom with a stroller, she's gotta navigate you that curb and move the grass. Let's not contest. This past Wednesday morning, I saw a young mom with a stroller with a lady. She was in the street, South Knight going north. She had to go past the drain. On South Knight, by the power ward, just to get to Cody Roads. Not only is it a convenience issue, but it becomes a safety factor. And I hope the council will start to review some of the waivers that have been granted over time. I have nothing against waivers. The commercial property, which there's not much focus, but traffic. But it did. Change, and the need to, there comes a need to real value-wise that says those waivers, and I hope the council will take that. I was considering, it's not just a sidewalk from South Knight. If you look at Iowa Street coming east of the high school, that's by the maintenance shop, there's a sidewalk, but at Kruger's Trucking. And then around the corner going up to the Y M C A, there's no sidewalk. And I think it is at Lee School and up there, the Y M C A. They either have to go on the south side of that sidewalk, Iowa Street, or if they're on the north side, they have to cross over Kruger's property. You know, it's, you know, it's grass and gravel and so forth. And then there is the one on the east side, they start wearing that little shopping complex there. If they're gonna go up the dentist office, they either have to walk in the sidewalk. West side, or they have to go across the grass and the, you know, ground and so forth, so. Some of these owners and properties, see if they can get sidewalks and things. The other thing that I would like to speak to is um. The waiver of property taxes for industry coming into town. Stand there, pause, when companies relocate like throw a call, I'm not just trying to be my. I, I see this trend of, lived in three different states, states over my career in both the world, and I've seen this repeated multiple times. Where communities, being with other communities, to try to get companies coming to town, definitely, there's a nut side that's having those companies into the community. But. Municipalities have to have money. We all have to support the services that the cities offer. And to give a hundred percent waiver for ten years, to me, just doesn't pass the common sense test. I don't mind a waiver of say fifty percent, because I know businesses have expenses. They, they have to recoup those costs. I feel the same way. But I'm not supporting a hundred percent waiver in the first. I think if fifty percent, they do a gradual decline, still over five or ten years. For about a ten, about thirteen years, this last, depending on our decision. I mean, all this property owners here, I probably try, so I didn't get a discount when I moved out, reached nineteen ninety-four. So again, I would hope that the council will review those terms of. Purpose of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Consideration to approve the city council minutes from July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
Always changes. I didn't see any changes besides what we made in the council meeting, and I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that. Motion by Blackwell, second by Chief, to approve the city council meetings from July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes, ahs. Or a consideration to approve bills payable. Sir Blackwell, do you have any questions?
I have hundred. No, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
I had a couple, but they were my word, I think the rest for now.
Mr. Chief.
Hi.
Chair Collins, mind your answer.
Sure, I think.
Mind your answer, pardon me. Look at our motions, approve those table.
So.
Second. Motion by Collins, second by Peters, to approve any bills payable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs. Or the consideration to approve a temporary five-day liquor license. Subject from eight sixteen twenty-three to eight twenty twenty-three for Cabo's Catina Grill for music in the park. Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Dr. Second by Peters to approve the five-day list, temporary liquor license for Cabo's Catina Grill for music in the park. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Names, ayes, ahs. For six, it's a consideration, the third and final reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, at fifteen, amending title D, chapter one, section. Nineteen point twelve sidewalks of the city of Eldridge Code to include public and municipal districts, and to address the sidewalk assessment waiver for district existing industrial parks. Yes, my calling you.
Uh, yes, mayor. Um, aside from Mr. Wees's recent comments, we've received no other comments on this issue.
And that is the one. That I believe you explained there were some changes in red.
Um.
Find the wording.
I'm gonna take a look in this one.
Your nineteen point twelve.
Uh, yes, um.
Does I may have any questions for Jeff on this final wording?
I guess I, I don't have any questions. What's been proposed here, or about Mr. We stated tonight? I wanted to make sure that we're not. Posing our minds and thinking regarding what's out there now, current.
Right.
But it up into residential. Well. Not forcing ourselves to take corporate actions when the need be, or there is a safety concern there, the Rusty Ridge, the area. Through there, Iowa Street continues to grow, so I want to make sure that, you know, that we're cautious about that before we say aye. Move the vote.
If I talk to Jeff about those changes in red, absolutely expanses.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't close it, it expands. So that would.
Correct.
Concerns.
So any of the waivers that are out there now, we can revisit anytime and go back and say, hey. Now we have to put the sidewalks in, now the waiver period is over, so we can address. Right. Those issues we brought up.
Precisely, I just want to make sure, with, with looking at that and reading that, that we were all on the same page, knowing that. Hearing that.
Yeah.
That we can have exceptions to certain areas. So, just wanna, hmm, just wanna make sure with that.
From this point forward, it addresses what Mr. Wees is talking about. However, keep in mind, we do have some areas of the town that were built in the mid-seventies, mid-eighties. That sidewalks were not required at the time, nor were waivers. If we address those, we're gonna have to go through those property, but sidewalks suffer. But there's a couple down on South First Street, uh, I have circled, I know one granted. But we can revoke that at any time and definitely put it in sidewalks. The only thing I could think of, I know this is light in the game, if we have provision in here, you can't put light landscape, be more future sidewalk, maybe. But. We still have the teeth, it's, that they're expensive. They do that, and we say, hey, now's the time. We must put it aside, we're gonna have to do it at their expense, because we're requiring them to report the, the waiver at court house. So if they will find, so if they choose the landscape for the sidewalks to go, it's their expense to take it all up.
Right, and it is in the right way, which, you know, it would be in that situation.
Right. But we do have some parts of town that was not required, I mean, those parts were built like that on North Ninth Avenue. For.
Third and final reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, at fifteen.
So move.
Second. Motion by Peters, second by Collins, to approve, third and final reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, at fifteen. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
At the um, last council meeting, we talked about public works getting together, looking at streets, and I would like that. When we move forward with this, add sidewalks on that too, and address those particular concerns, uh. Jake's mentioned, especially the residential areas linking up to the industrial, in commercial.
Right.
Thank you. It's the consideration of second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, at sixteen, adding title eight, chapter two. Build a service employee residency requirements to the Eldridge City Code. Jeff, I'll call on you again. Has anybody said anything about that?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, we've received uh, no comments on this. We did make a couple of minor changes based on. Uh, what was agreed upon at the last council meeting. Uh, so the distance was changed to thirty miles, and the center point of Leclerc Road and First Street was added to the ordinance.
Yeah, a lot of changes. Second reading, ordinance twenty-three, two thousand point three, at sixteen.
I'll make motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty, twenty-three, at sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Chief, second by Blackwell, to approve the second reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, dash sixteen. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Sixty. Open public hearing for the sale of parcel land located. In the city of Eldridge, to Bankland, L L C. Jeff, can I call on you on this again?
Uh, yes, mayor. Uh, so once again, we're looking at the point one nine nine acre parcel, uh, triangle. Um, that the city was, uh, found out that we owned, uh, a couple of months ago. Uh, that's adjacent to a property that, uh, was recently purchased and is currently being developed. Um, so, uh, right now, the property has no assessed value. Um. So, uh, city recommendation is to, uh, proceed with the sale. Uh, to avoid, uh, future taxes and maintenance by the city to a parcel that serves no use for the public.
Make your motion of open public hearing.
So move this. Second.
Back to me, Doc.
By Blackwell.
Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Good question, I got a question. Is there an intended use of this ground, or is this regular ground, or do you have to put storage units on it, or?
The. Yeah, the future development will be mini storage and outdoor storage of, of these parcels.
Well, that parcel was, it's a, it's classified municipal right now, so they gotta go through. Order change to get it bonded into, uh, commercial at that point.
Yeah, it's actually selling the same as the property next to it.
Is already, it's not municipal?
No, the city didn't, it was a surprise, city owned it. It came up in a survey that the. Uh, developer was doing, uh, on researching the property. I believe they actually thought that they were buying that parcel when they purchased the property.
I remember the agreed price was one dollar, sorry.
Yeah.
And they're paying for all the expense too.
Correct.
Results and.
Yeah, all the legal expenses, uh, the plating, um, and the legal expenses are on the developer, that's correct.
Thank you.
Just a little, little strip of land on.
Yeah, a little triangle, so it's the old, it's kind of the old railroad.
Right. Leave us for the retention, retention part.
Uh, yeah, one of a couple.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not actually gonna be. Overused for that purpose.
Yeah, got you.
Make motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Did you have a question, or? Yeah, just a thought, I'm sorry.
Want to clarity, um. Was that negotiated at one dollar, or did I understand you correctly, will be a retention part, or something along?
None of those planned. We're kinda jumping the gun here, because later on the agenda, you'll see, uh, there'll be a final plat approval for that property, but. The plans haven't been approved, the intended future use. Uh, by the developers. Point one nine nine acres, so about a fifth of an acre.
Not much.
And it's in a place that, like I said, if, that the city had to maintain that, and we had to pay taxes on it, I mean, it serves no. Uh, there's no public purpose that's served by retaining ownership of that property.
I just, when I saw it in paper, one dollar, it's just.
Rest.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the. Little property on, on the curve of the road, it's just a little strip, so hence very, whatever, gonna be way back from that, it's. Just almost everywhere you put a sidewalk in, and this way the city doesn't have to maintain it.
It would be a burden on the city to retain ownership of it.
No, no, it may express to have that little strip. I'm just gonna post up here.
Blackwell, second. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Collins.
All right.
Sixty, consider us, consideration of resolution, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five, approving the sale of parcel land located. At the city of Eldridge, to Bankland, L L C. Where it says the owners of Bankland, it's all built seeds, will be ready developing the properly located at thirty-four twenty, South Eleventh Avenue, and thirty-five twelve, South Eleventh Avenue. And have requested purchase properly from by the city, located in Eldridge, Iowa, Scott County. Getting that points, nine sixty, point fifty-five, west of northeast corner, said section twenty-six, north, there's a point being northwest, and a reef by the Black Doggy. That's your park, first edition, hence. Right, it's that south, you're right, that's all there is.
Hmm.
So we see. So we're attracting, there's kind of a large plan, and the second pair of grass will be growing in London, is that south, it's zero degrees, there's plenty. Then it's cheap. It'd be like, that's why, that's why this company would, okay. Two hundred and forty-four, nine twenty-three, feet wide, that's one of the seven dishes, at a point on Northwest Runway, flying to those where CMSA, P M P. Where mode pens, north twenty-second. Eight and a quarter west, two sixty-three point seven, you know, on the right side. Line, the said north line, hence east, one hundred point three feet along said north line, the point beginning containing. Twelve thousand, two hundred fifty-one square feet, more or less, including three thousand eighty-seven square feet, more or less. In the Presley established road, except from the said parts of the land that are sixty feet, whereas the city council determines there is no public purpose. To be served by retaining ownership of said property, and said property has no excess value. Via resolve, the city council, the city of Eldridge, will sell this parcel to Bankland, L L C, for one dollar, passed and approved the seven day of August, two thousand twenty-three. Right here, motion to approve the solution, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five, approving the sale.
Okay.
Yes, I'm in.
I'm in favor of this, but the last paragraph, I agree, Mr. Waste the dollar, to me anymore, anything for a dollar doesn't really constitute. The sale, in modern day standards, is ten bucks. So I'd like to change that to ten dollars, another valuable consideration. Because they were paying all the P's for. Recording, a tank. So can you handle it, mine bucks?
Yeah. You make the motion that, correct, you're right.
Correct.
Go here, second.
Second.
Rock with you. Okay. Motion by Dr. Second by Peters to approve resolution, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five, approving the sale of parcel lands. With the correction of selling the parcel to the Bankland L C for ten dollars instead of one dollar. Roll call.
Chief.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Collins. Blackwell.
Aye.
Except, consideration of second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, seventeen, amending title eight, chapter three, section five, point zero two. Authority of the Elder City Code to include the spending authorization, authorization to five thousand, or department heads, general engineering cost, that. Related to daily operations or public facility improvement plans. Motion. Yes, if anybody said anything about that.
Uh, we received no comments on it. Um, we did add, based upon the, uh, agreed upon discussion at the last reading. To add with the approval of the city administrator, um. Into the definition. So that would be the only change since the first reading.
Baker, name. Give it to all, um, not here representing the utility board, but I am on board, and I'd like to see that same. Uh, phrase carry over to utility board, and. As we've had some situations. We, that could address this issue. Okay, so it sounds like good, that's all mine, okay?
Could I hear a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, dash seventeen?
Motion to approve ordinance, twenty, twenty twenty-three, seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Chief, second by Blackwell, to approve the second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, dash seventeen. Roll call.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye. Sorry.
Black.
Bye.
Bye.
Six, Chief, consideration of second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, dash eighteen. Menning title eight, chapter twelve, section twenty-eight point zero zero. Policy on serving alcohol and events within the city limit to include a provision requiring event hosts and organizers to assume responsibility. For ensuring vendors have the appropriate licenses to sell alcoholic beverages. That's, has anybody spoken about that?
Uh, we've received no comments on this. Um, we did remove the line that was motioned to be removed. Uh, at the first reading. So that is no longer in the ordinance, uh, otherwise it's the same as last time.
Okay. In the quick, but we forget.
And that line was making the third party, the host of the things, block.
Correct.
Right, I guess, my question, what I've read in doing. They have to notify the vendors, and to.
Question, I think it's just to, um, provide the host and the organization, that we're hosting organizations and agencies that, uh, it's more for. To informing them that this is the step that needs to be taken, so, um, just putting it in convenience form that. That, um, they have that responsibility to make sure that their vendor's second property licenses.
Well, it's, see, that's two different things. Making sure they notify, this one, making sure they. Ensure the vendors have the proper licenses, it's totally separate, qualification, responsibility, two. Different points.
Without the ordinance, I mean, there's nobody. That is, I guess, responsible for checking on those vendors, but the city doesn't have that, that oversight to the. The events that are being hosted, a lot of times, we don't have involvement in it at all, or we do very little, so. It just helps to ensure that the vendors that are serving food or alcohol in our city limits have their, like, there's not, we have some sort of. Step in place to ensure that somebody knows that needs to be happening.
Well. Still have a problem with, with the organizer having to notify the vendors, they have to have all the applicable. Things, I need. I can't see a third party, whether it's a church, a chamber, whatever, going up, saying you have to have them, if you don't have it, what are they gonna do?
A little to ensure that they don't get their, shut down at their event, some at the state agency, or a health department would come in and shut them down, or somebody would notify one of our agencies to go and look, and we would have to shut them down if they didn't have licensure. It just prevents that type of thing happening at an, an agency's event, just by them simply knowing that there are licenses that they have to have to serve for alcohol. And then.
Well, it's first party, saying the organizer has to notify them, they have to have everything in place. I'm not okay with saying the organizer has to make sure they have things in place, they're not enforcement, if anybody in town is enforcement, they are police department. You can say you have to have them in place, and you have to have proof at the event. And this firm can spot check. But I don't think it's organized, it's responsibilities to spot check. They have no enforcement authority. Understanding was, it was just for an education, to make sure that they knew what laws were. For, for the organizers, sort of kind of took the. Took it off, it can see.
That you get the situation well, I told you that, no you didn't, yes I did, no you didn't.
That's why we, that's why we put it in the board, so that it's there as a, a sort of regulation that we're trying to prevent. Or organizations and agencies from knowingly or not knowingly bringing vendors in that are, don't have the proper licensure to sell. Food or alcohol to our citizens in the community, it's just to take that preventative step to. Try to make sure that all of our, our events are safe, and you have the proper licenses to serve that.
That's the notification part, and it's still the way it's written, that, that there's a burden on the, the hosts, the turks, the group, whatever. Uh, to enforce that, or if they're. What, what are the liabilities, just that the vendor is told, you gotta pack up and go?
They, if they weren't having a license, they would get shut down, and then they would be, um, state would hold them accountable for not having their licensure, and whatever. Penalties that the state enforces, um, for not having that licensure. I think this went through Public Safety Committee, and the recommendation from Public Safety was to put an ordinance together to brand new by council, what you consider.
Well, it's trying to make it easier, but it, it does really make it easier to get the stuff in, and. Easier to enforce, it always makes it harder to enforce.
Um.
Couple things with it, it, it's not a bad idea to do right now on the civil liability side of it. Having an ordinance in place, putting up. Having an ordinance in place, putting up. Person who organized an event, if they're gonna bring people in that are gonna sell alcohol. Totally, they're responsible and be sure that everybody that's part of their event. Life because something happens. They to be sued so beyond that portion that they don't make sure that everybody that's in their event, it's not on the police or the city. That protects the city from any liability, making sure that that. Organizer is running a proper event. Um, I don't, I don't think it's really that bad of a deal, I think. The best way to do it is some organizers are being educated on this. Most likely have some type of. Drag or something that they do with these. Or the organization that they put on it. So that could be part of when they turn in your packet to organizer. That they're also turning in a copy of their license, so that shows that they're properly licensed. It's to protect the organizer too, it's not. Or that they are properly educated that they are gonna make sure. There's a license for somebody selling alcohol at their events, so they'll come back and think.
Yeah, that's that's what it's key to it, but the way this is, it just says they they have to notify. And that's like I said, no, you didn't say, having that.
But with the notice.
You gotta turn in something ahead of time, that's.
But that's where with the notification it comes from, it's when somebody goes to fill out a communication that are large after your processes. They don't want to be a part of your event, then whatever they have to fill out with that organizer, that's. That's how they notify them, it's gonna say it in their paperwork, then you have to provide. License that you're committed to solve, so that's where the, you know, it doesn't have to be done early, but on the. Part of the tax thing and how to.
Yeah, I mean, what what are the uh. Requirements now, if I'm gonna have. An event and I'm gonna have vendors there, what? What are my responsibilities as as the host?
Oh, if anything, the city work.
So are we gonna have a a form made that? Says, you know, check off this, if I have five vendors, I have to turn in five uh licenses or verifications.
I I don't think, I don't think they have to turn anything into the city, it's just. Anybody that wants to be a part of their event is actually gonna be. Well, it's more of a safety for the organizer as well, because I'm saying to you, because they bring. Somebody in her event and they're sort of helping them, they don't have license and something happens with somebody. I can tell you now, we're we're. We're gonna be at that.
That is the city.
Mr. Chiefs.
Name the person that organized a couple of events. Every thing I think of. I talk to. And I know what the. Even though we don't have to turn them in, I know. Protect myself. And that's why the vendors, the the person they organize it should not be. And this, this would be a good thing to have in an ordinance, so. As the organizer, I know that I've got to check this. Doesn't mean I have to come to the city and say. These people have this, but I know that I can clean this. And I I've done a couple of events here in town uh for the last two years. One might have the licenses that they do.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is the city gonna have a form, if I'm gonna sponsor an event, I can go up here. And get a form, it has checklists and, you know, I have to make sure that the property I'm holding it on, if it's available. I have to make sure that any vendor I bring in has the right certification. Just not that I have to turn it back to the city, but I have a form that I know the steps that I have to take.
Right, I I think that's a pretty something. For the city and they have. Then they they can be offered by the city, say, when you stop then you.
Because if you do that, then.
And that's, that would be, that wouldn't be.
I mean, that's where you're. Know of buying the host and then the host are required, they know what they need to do, so if we just do that, what's?
Think, because I I've looked at this before and it it makes sense to me because it's. It it's not to get anybody into trouble, it's also about protecting the city, but also protecting somebody that's hosting an event. Sure, they know what they are coming in, the people coming. He would still just come back when that was fine.
Problems with a form that I would have to. I I wouldn't have a problem. Because I'd make sure that they have the.
I would actually be grateful to be educated by the city to. Sure you have the papers to protect you.
Well, we can add form, we that we don't have to have. And then this, this says alcoholic beverages, what about food, if somebody gets food poisoning? Uh, because improper sanitation habits or. You know, food preparation or whatever, and if it's already law that the the host and vendor are both responsible. Uh.
It's like, in all reality, there's ordinance computers, what the ordinance does, it it also protects the city on liability too. And there's probably nothing wrong with putting in there too, that they have to ensure that anybody's on. And approved by the health department, uh, we've had food vendors contacted us, uh, that they had paperwork to pay up to do. And. Check reference staff and everything they tell them, so if they're telling sound without the pardon. That's the city as well.
Well, you know, the the law works, I don't, uh, so. If they don't have to turn anything into the city, we're just taking their word for it. So how's that protecting the city?
Because we have a pretty hard place and it's saying that the organizing is. Take their responsibility and please. Vendors that are coming in to their event. Actually, the organizers are, they're gonna follow through, I say, came from the brain, when you turn in your contract, can you turn in a copy of your license? Can there's, there's some approval or someone, I'll involve. If the organizer doesn't follow through on that, I mean, technically, if something happens, it just falls back on them, and if. The most important thing is we want to make. I mean, we got on top of that, I mean. Audience have police officers go and start checking, pulling licenses, but have, I think, that was bad on those two. And we started with all these intensive people, keep their license, they move that whole their event. I don't think, I think you're gonna have more pushback from. That's gonna be making sure that the organizer during that. Some member of the council entrance.
Well, then I, we think we need, like I said, a a city, a form, so they know exactly what is expected. And they don't have to turn that in, but they know that if something would happen. And they don't have this certain occupation or whatever on their vendors, they they are viable, as well as the vendor.
They're not the city.
First of all, this is written just for. If I said, we have so, we have ordinances in place for food trucks, all right? Um, if somebody hosts an event on private property, I don't see how we can get live on it.
What about if it's a city property?
Well, okay, that's a whole different valley way, because city property, we approved one tonight. The only way they can serve alcohol is if they come before this board and they get the five day, that's a minimum window, they have to come here anyways.
Must they have a caterer's license or something like that, so that's where it gets tricky, we don't know what vendors, we might approve a street closure, but no vendors ever come to us. And we don't know who they are, we don't know if they have vendors, and if their vendors have caterer licenses, or if their vendors are supposed to have temporary licenses. We don't know that, so this just offers. Um, that that level of protection for them and for us, and to ensure that we're not shutting down their events because we find out someone's not licensed. We ensure that nobody's getting sued, the agency or the city or whoever, and that. That we're doing the best that we can with the powers that we have, um, making ordinances and codes that. Will protect everybody involved and hopefully have safe and. And the fucking to shut anything down and.
Generally, except that the catering license, if it's on city property. Think we still have to issue. A liquor license for them to serve alcohol.
Uh, what about tasting events?
They have catering license that goes for, the temporary license is to let them serve in a different location if they don't have a catering. Because their like liquor license is specific to their property or business, but they don't have a catering license and they only have it for their restaurant. And they want to come to a festival, they have to get a temporary liquor license for that location, that property. It doesn't um have anything to do, whether it's on city property or or different property, it's where they're allowed. Where their liquor license is valid.
We can only, this is the only body that can grant liquor.
We don't grant them for city, we grant them in general around the community for different properties. Um, because we we endorse liquor licenses, whether they're temporary or annual, whatever type of liquor license they have, they all come through us, but endorsing.
Right. So isn't it our responsibility to make sure that?
We will endorsement they come through, but it would be very difficult to go to every event that somebody has and ask what vendors they have. And if they're supposed to have certain licenses and that's not really our area of restrictions with liquor licenses, we endorse them as they come through. But it would be a very difficult task and to provide more liability to the city to put. It on us to enforce every organization and agency's event, where they send up vendors. And ensure that their vendors have all of the appropriate licenses, then we would be assuming the responsibility to go out and figure out who they are and the licenses they have.
We assume the responsibility to enforce every ordinance and resolution this body grows. Grab this, it's gonna be our responsibility.
To ensure that the that agencies and organizations are. Going through some sort of process, whatever that might be for them, to ensure that their vendors are licensed, we would expect that.
I have no problem sending out that you have to have this contact soon, but it won't take us the organizer's role enforcement. I voted no on the first time, like I don't vote no on this the second.
Is I just, what qualifies a food truck if I uh. Come to a thing and I set up a table and grill and cook pork chops and stuff. Sell them for this organization that is at a food truck.
So we have a mobile food truck ordinance where they have to go through a permitting process with us, but the body that has jurisdiction over. Their serving is the health department to ensure that they have their licenses and licenses properly posted, so the health department would be the come, the ones to come in and enforce that. We would, of course, following the health department's um guidelines and and regulations, if he knew that somebody wasn't licensed. We could import, we could have our enforcement go in and shut them down, but the. The health department would be the ultimate body that would enforce that on them, but we do have a a. Ordinance in place because the city has a permitting process for more food trucks to come.
So food vendor license and food truck are they the same, or are they two?
Food vendor and food truck are similar, they fall under temporary food license or temporary establishment. Rather than a permanent establishment or building or business, um, but there's.
Our our. Ordinance says food trucks, so that cover them.
Yeah, temporary food establishment.
The same, or is that legally?
Yeah.
Covers it all.
Yeah, they come, they cover the the temporary food establishments however. That was the.
Bottom line, we just proved topics. Or live.
We approve that they have a liquor license, they're they're, it doesn't carry any liability, we endorse their temporary liquor license, so they are, you know, they did register for.
Our. So if something goes sideways.
There's, there's not a liability to us in that, because they have their liquor license to sell it and they have their grant insurance, which covers their liability.
For sure, there's a few attorneys that will change.
If you're gonna worry about your attorney, then. You might as well make.
That's what we're doing. I agree.
But what we're talking about here is I don't have a problem with food trucks either. Having to have some report to the city. I don't have a problem with that. And it's easier for me to get that stuff from and bring it to the city. Then have twenty pieces of content and say, hey, I get food vendor truck and I'm going to set up there. In in a city, so you have twenty people coming in at one time to fill out forms, where you can only get one. Sponsor of the the whole. All labs. He can bring it in to. Get the form, you can take it to him, have it filled out, he can check the licenses and bring it in.
I'm asking them to turn anything in to us, we're just letting them know that there are licenses that vendors need to have in order to serve in our community. Um, because they have to have those licenses to serve to to the public, and we're asking those organizations. Ensure that when they sign up vendors, they go through some sort of process, they can, they can do that however they want to do that, we don't put anything. We're not asking for any structure or anything on that, we are just asking them to ensure that they. When they sign up a vendor to serve to the public in in Eldridge, that we would let them ensure that they are properly licensed to do so.
I'm still confused on this, it just. The general concept, it just seems like, you know, we're just passing the buck of this, we're not really doing anything to make sure. That there. That happens better, it's just maybe we're, think we're getting rid of liability in some case, something bad happens. But other than that, the same just says, well, this, you gotta do all this stuff and just, if you don't do that, we're passing all the liability off to you. It's kind of like, okay, you just have.
Trying to help them from having liability by having this in place, and so they're aware of it, then if they. Take this step that we're asking them to take, then they won't find themselves, like Chief said, in a civil lawsuit. We don't have liability, we don't enforce it, they don't need to come to us, we don't check in on them. When events come up, we don't go out and check and make sure everybody has a license, that's, that's not the role of the city. Um, local government, we're not asking them to come to us with this ordinance, we're trying to ensure that our organizations that have the events are protected. And have the chance to be protected by knowing that this is the step that they should take to make sure that they're having safe events and providing.
Like this state if have to have this form from the city and fill it out, prepare them before your event.
Oh, we can't give them a lic, they still have to go to the state, they still have to go through all their process, if they came to the city, we'd be happy to guide them on the process. But we can't give them a liquor license, we would have.
Don't say that, here's, here's, you're saying you're trying to help out these organizers that were in trouble, well. How many other people do we help out, is that a responsibility to help out with all these things, make sure? This goes through, I mean, why can't we just have a the the form, if I'm in open event? This is a checklist, you know, make sure you, all your vendors have licenses, you know, make sure the appropriate. Finding things are are taken care of, make sure that the property you're holding it on is all corrected, everything, and make sure like seventy hours of opening and closing. Make sure that it's not uh gonna cause any traffic problems on the the streets or anything, it's, it's gonna be on.
Yeah, just like they come to the city council, they ask for um to be allowed to close the road. Um, because that is our area of enforcement and our jurisdiction and our property, so they have to come to us to approve, they can't just go shut down a road. So it's it's kind of that same concept, and really, this, this just came um. Across to us, the situation came up that we became aware of um with this particular issue. And so we took it to the Public Safety Committee and the Public Safety Committee asked us to draft an ordinance for council.
Well, yeah, that, there it says it's, they have to come to us to close the road, but like with this law, it's like, uh, to me, I'm perfect, okay, uh. You don't have to come up, come to us to close the road, but if you do close the road, there's a problem, you're responsible or not. Yes, we're just passing it. Mr. Blackwell, don't either.
It's. Seems like the process is being streamlined by by doing so. If we want like communication with paperwork, then well, we can give a check to them. But it it appears to be that, my understanding of this, we're trying to streamline it. Um, be as a a city to to.
to, to be able to go everywhere and check with, with, with everybody, but that it's ultimately that, borderline responsibility, goodwill, good faith. To ensure that they're checking, they're due diligence doing this. We say, and we give them that checklist, but we can specifically say, mind you all this, ensure that there is licensure here when they, when they come. And then, then we're, we're doing both, we give verbal and, and we give something written to them. And then they carry that out, do diligence. Good faith as a business to ensure with their liability. So I, I'm sure those who are doing this in good faith and were in the business correctly want to avoid any type of liability, especially when it comes to consumption of alcohol in any accidents that may occur from that. So if we do this, then it, I believe we're covered for liability asset. From inspecting, we have no, we have no inspectors that can go around like this, like the other bigger cities do. I feel that this would cover everything, streamline, and this is making it easy for us as, as a city, and it gives us onus to these individuals who are sponsoring this, to do their due diligence to ensure that they're, they're going through here and they're checking, okay, yes, we have this, uh, you don't. But they're not coming or I still, I feel even too much a liability to, to be here, and it's just, you know, it's not. I don't feel like we're like, imagine where you're from per se. Here's affirmation here, you do, you do get due diligence to ensure that, so you're a responsible business owner.
Well, my understanding. My understanding is chief, so those two things are already covered by some of them, then and the hoax. They're already liable. So.
Yeah, but still, this gives them information.
But well, coming up and getting a form from the city, do the same thing? I don't think we enforce it anyway, it's just that, well, if something happens after the fact that, you know, an accident or a problem, somebody gets sick. Then we'll look into it and see what took place, but do we? Is there any kind of enforcement beforehand?
Yeah. This is the second reading, so a sentence could be added or deleted at this point, correct?
Correct.
So how about for number six G, second reading, ordinance two thousand twenty-three eighteen? How, we have Jeff. The last sentence of section one says, city hall staff may assist in providing current license status of event. Vendors if requested and add another sentence that says and we'll provide a checklist of necessary requirements for your event, something like that. And then we'll create, we'll draft a a checklist. And then that will be provided up here at city hall for any event person, so as a checklist, it's just something for them to get when they come in here, because they have to come here to start the process of an event, so that way they'll be given the checklist.
Then I mean, the warning if requested, then.
Make it a requirement that they go up to checklist, then that does put liability on us, because if we don't give them that checklist because they don't come to get it, then then we've entered ourselves into the equation where we were not and did not have responsibility to that. Um, I would. I don't know if putting a line in there and requiring them to come up and get some checklist from the city is going to, how do we provide the city with the best solution? We, there doesn't have to be an ordinance, it just offers that line of protection and that was the suggestion from the committee, but it certainly doesn't have to be adopted, but I don't know if I would put a requirement that puts the city in a, in a position where it has to sign off on all of these events and vendors, because that's where we have to be enforcing them, or we do become liable at that point.
And technically say that, you know, you're responsible, have all this taken care of, you said to help them out so they know what it is. We can move on, we'll just, we got third reading, so.
Make a motion to table this, what I'd say.
If any ordinance, it's an ordinance, any ordinance can be modified in the future, at any given point in time. Precisely, so.
My point is, the city's not willing to enforce it. How do we expect an organizer to enforce it?
He said, that's the only unfortunate. Say it's the driver's responsibility. Have a license and they have to do this and that, but it's.
I don't think we're talking about enforcing, then is there a need to enforce based on what's been written in here? In the, in the way it can be changed, so, but I mean, that's, that's what it appears to be. So, I mean, this is, I mean, do we already have a motion to, to table it, if not, then I and I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for approval. As for right now, because I, I think we're digging, I think we're digging too much in it or getting off the wayside, that's what the original point of it was, I feel, and this, if this went through public safety. And they okayed it based on that. Then why?
Public safety is only forty percent of this council.
Why pull it, why pull it and break it apart? And add more work to it and revisit it again.
Yeah, they're passing the second reading and the, deal with it before the third reading or. Table it or. They provoke it, so for clarification, my motion to table the second. Hey. Well, I didn't know we were, okay, done discussing.
Correct. So. Okay, so we have a, a motion to table it, correct? I refer it again, all right, is there a second?
I am not clear on this yet, so. I would, if we don't want to take the time to, to table it, then we need to clear things up before the third reading. Or it's connected.
Mr. Collins, Mr. Chief, where do you sit on this?
I see it as an education to the vendors that we're doing, I see it as not trying to brush anything off on anyone. I see this as trying to cover us. You know, if, if I give out what if, you know, I guess my big thing is, what if a vendor allows alcohol consumption without the correct license? And, and we know of it and we're trying to fix, but we cannot, they're not coming to us like Lewis did tonight, and he did the right thing. But if they don't come and they don't do the right thing, then what, what do we have to really cover? And we know that it's happening, wh- what would we do?
The police will take care of their break and move the law.
So if, if we have a resolution, then we give him a right to do that? Or if we don't have a resolution, we can't do anything?
Knows and he goes and shuts it down in the middle of their event. Doesn't make the vendor or the residents very happy, I think if we can avoid it, I think that was. I, I think ultimately that was the solution that.
Right, and Brian's a hundred percent correct, where we, we do approve the five day, it costs them a hundred and fifty dollars, I believe. It's five hundred, five hundred to do it, um, you as X Y Z vendor do not want to pay the five hundred dollars, so I'll just kind of swing under the radar. We make sure that that doesn't happen.
Well, this does make sure it doesn't happen. Just tells the, the. Let's table, I have second. I won't get a vote on it, so. Let's go to the. Take a vote on the second reading.
Motion was to table this.
I will second that, but it'll be three too, so then might as well just go do this.
Blackwell.
This is the table.
I don't, so. But this, well, I did not, I can say, I can say there afterwards, but, but I will say I.
Years.
Second reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three eighteen is table.
With so much, with so much time back and forth with this and on what we have ahead of us, it was, this, yeah, this took way too much time and get this all, I guess we could table it to ensure that all parties agreement. With coverage or, or any other sections to the matter of the ordinance, but, but in force, so. But I think probably works for the due diligence on it, city staff was involved with this.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Seven eight consideration, the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen, many title D, chapter two, section twenty-eight. I one light industrial district to update principal permitted, since Jeff, I can call on you that for a little bit.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Would you just like a general summary?
Yes.
Right now, okay, um. Councilman Daughery requested a review of the light industrial and general industrial uses. As when we were discussing a rezoning of a piece of suburbanic property to general industrial. Uh, since that time, uh, staff and uh, planning and zoning commission have reviewed the ordinances and their amended, um. Uses and permitted uses on review. Um, we're in the memo, uh, the, any changes were marked in red. Uh, I can answer questions on those or go through those individually, however you'd like me to do it. Uh, it was included in your packet, so hopefully you've all seen it and read it at this point. Um, but just let me know how much more information you would like at this point.
Of the twenty point zero six that we deleted, how did we? Look at that because don't need ordinance cannot override ordered adjustment.
Um, twenty-eight point zero six is dealing with outdoor storage, um, which was uh, put in as a use, which was added as use on review up above and kind of separated it more concisely. Uh, the biggest change you'll see is, and then both in both districts, any type of storage, uh, outdoor storage or mini storage or self-storage uh, was put into the use on review. Um. And there was a line added, um, at the end of the permitted uses that said any uses not listed above would be considered a use on review unless prohibited, you know, in the naming section. So it's kind of a catch-all, if it's, if it's not named here, it's a use on review and you have to go to the board. Um. I can summarize a couple of the other ones here. Um. Uh, so in general industrial. Um, you'll see the permitted use on reviews, uh, parking lots, public and private was moved to a use on review. Landfill was moved from a light industrial uh, use on review, land to a, a use on review and general industrial. Uh, recycling yards were added to use on review and general industrial, rail, storage yards and transfer stations was added as a use on review in general industrial, and then the outdoor storage was, you know, put in both sections. So right now, the only place that self-storage is allowed is commercial and light industrial, uh, never was allowed in general industrial. Um, and then the outdoor storage facilities was clarified.
That being said, looking for a motion to approve the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen. Many probably chapter two, section twenty-eight. I one light industrial district to update it, permitted principally.
It must to, uh, set the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen.
Second.
By Peter, second by Chief. To approve first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen, roll call.
Daughery. Collins.
Hi.
Blackwell.
Hi.
Chief.
Hi.
Peter.
Side.
Well, yeah, it's been more situation here, Jeff, and they call you in.
Yeah, and I, I believe that I covered, uh, the uses for both districts, uh, but we had to separate it into two ordinances because they pretend, uh, pertain to two different sections of the code. So the first, uh, the nineteen involved light industrial, the, the number twenty involves the general industrial.
For yeah, where does two thousand twenty-three twenty? On general industrial district.
Very done, uh, since this first reading, we still have two readings to find, uh, find, pick it if we need to, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty forty-four point.
Second. Motion by Peter, second by Daughery to approve the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash twenty. Roll call.
Collins.
Right.
Blackwell. Chief. Art. Peter.
Side.
Daughery.
Open published appearance for rezones that lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six in New Runwell second edition. From the R three multiple family residential district to the planned residential overlay. Um, Jeff, could you explain this, like you did earlier?
Sure, um, this is something new that we haven't seen in Eldridge, but we have had a provision in the code with for uh, quite a while, I believe, um. So what we're looking at is a planned residential overlay, uh, district. Um, this is only gonna encompass the multi-family part of Grunwald second edition. Um, and it basically creates an overlay over the top to allow the developer, um, some leeway, um, pertaining to the development underneath. Uh, in this, in this situation, it's an R three, uh, development, multi-family district that's below. Um. All of those requirements, uh, basically in this situation are gonna carry over to the top. Um, I did include some plans for you to look at, right now, uh, we're not approving any plans. We're simply approving the concept that yes, the planned residential overlay district, um, would be a good fit for this area. And then we handle it just like a rezoning according to code. Um, in this instance, what this is gonna allow this developer to do is to have some shared common access easements to get to interior lots. Uh, because the code says that all lots must have direct access to the street. Um, the planned residential overlay district will allow them to create some shared access easements, we're talking about townhouse condos anyway. Um, at some point, uh, when this was first presented and approved in the final plat, it was four. It was divided up into four lots and just a regular condo situation. At some point, the developer decided that, uh, they would like to have individual lots here. Which is why we need the planned residential overlay district, because otherwise the lots won't have direct street access. Um, so you can kind of see in the packet, there's a diagram of the actual uh, the, kind of the one that's the plaid is very confusing because there's lines everywhere for the individual lots. At some point in the future, you're gonna get a revised final plat. And a development plan to approve, that's required to proceed, uh, with the planned residential overlay district. Uh, but if you go past the, the plat, you'll kind of see a diagram of how the houses are laid out. They meet the requirements, uh, um. For lot size, multi-family, um, basically all the parts of the code. Um. Except for there's no city-owned street, uh, dividing that property up. Uh. So basically tonight, we're deciding, is this a good fit? Um. For this type of development, and if so, then basically. And if so, then basically we're rezoning uh, that center portion to a planned residential overlay district. And then in the future, you're gonna see a final plat and you're gonna see a development plan that shows you how everything's laid out.
And city staff would approve the changes, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, you will actually approve it, um, because in this instance, um, the planned residential overlay code says. That planning zoning has to approve a final plat and a development plan. And then city council also has to approve the final plat and the uh, development plan. Uh, you know, city staff will, of course, review it prior to it going to the commission and then to you, but. Yeah, you guys will have the final say in what happens here.
There, it's an maintenance of.
Yeah.
Interior access.
Yeah, so all of those, uh, all that parking lot and driveway, uh, all the yards. Um, everything there, uh, so the city will maintain Red Bud Circle, which is the horseshoe shaped road. And they'll maintain the storm sewers and they'll maintain the some mains, just like normal. Um, everything else that you see there will be, uh, the homeowner association will take care of all that. And they'll be provided in. In covenants, um, all the rules and guidelines for that, which you guys will have a chance to look at. At this point, we're not saying a. A final plat and a development plan, because it's possible this stuff might shift. A foot or two to the left or right. You know, when they get down into the nitty gritty, if that happens and they approve it now, then. You know, they just have to go back and do it again, because if one of those lines. Those many, many lines are off. You know. Right, so at this point, you're just, yeah.
Yeah. Cross section there, that's all green space.
Yeah, so they'll have a bad.
To the street.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a gap in between here?
Yeah, yeah, so you're seeing, yeah, you're seeing basically a driveway across here, a driveway across there. Green space, basically all the way around, uh, greenscape, green space through the backyards. Uh, there's quite a bit of green space here.
This is separate as well.
Yeah, that's all green, you know. Yeah, the only place is blacktop is here and here, and you know, it's possible that. Had he. You know, decided to do individual lots to begin with, he could have put this, you know, the city on street through there to begin with, but.
Originally, he was gonna put six or eight boxes down there.
Yeah, and that's changed, so it's it's much less dense than. You know, what our requirements are and what. He could do there.
The only thing we'll have to plan for is H O A's have a twenty year sunset. Yeah. Got some provision in there in that H O A who's very responsible for this. Paintings, that was interior access, right?
And again, really, the only difference between this and Ivy Acres is that. We've got public streets and Ivy Acres with each lot has access to, and this they don't.
Good question, please, good question here, I'm looking, looking at your, may I?
We're just gonna hold the public carry. We're just gonna hold the public carry, just hold on for a second.
Right. Sorry.
Motion by Dr. Second by Blackwell, open public hearing. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Hi.
Chief.
Hi.
Peters.
Hi.
After.
Bye.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking at this, uh, Jeff, here, and that's an overlay, and it's got twenty-fifth street, twenty-fourth street, they're all. I guess they're just, they're not what's said, is they're just taking off somewhere else.
Yeah, that's.
Width of the street.
Correct, yeah, twenty.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four feet.
Yeah, well, that's F T, the.
Yeah.
C H O G.
Yeah.
Uh, now, the other question, the two of them is, are there garages here?
Yes.
And the other is, is where's the visitor parking at?
Uh.
It won't be visitor park. So, I mean, visitor home.
Correct, um, and so the driveways, I mean, they all have driveways. I mean, what you're seeing there is.
It's just a garage, two car garage, one for each.
No, that would be green space. Yeah, so two car garage, two car garage, two car garage, there's driveways that would have additional parking there.
It would say.
So it is being.
That would be.
Driveway, where do they park in Ivy Acres? The driveway.
Just question, just question.
Yeah, uh, the driveway. And that would be. The same concept.
They're good. Fair.
Yeah, any other questions, or your motion to close from.
Some second.
Can I, Dr. Set my theater to close, my cheek, okay, my chief, second by cheek. Roll call.
Chief.
Hi.
Peters.
Side.
Daughery.
Hi.
Collins.
All right.
Blackwell.
All right.
Consideration, the first reading ordinance two thousand point three twenty one for the rezoning of lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. Of Brunwell Grove second edition from R three multiple family residential district to plan residential overlay. Actually, that the zoning map referred to in chapter two, title D of the Elder City Code had been part of the ordinance of the city of Eldridge. And so far as said map pertains to land as part of Brunwell second edition. And described as follows, lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. And Brunwell Grove second edition to the city of Eldridge, Iowa. The property is currently R three multiple family residential district and being rezoned to plan residential overlay district. Maxing density shall not exceed that of the underlying district. In addition, the following parcel map is attached here with and may part here to. As the same pertains to the said area is enacted, has a substitute. The lieu of the same area being described as shown on the said district map. If further enacted that the boundaries of the district's designations, notation, references. And the other information shown thereon as the same pertains to area described above are yet by way of amendment made. Part of the zoning ordinance of the city of Eldridge, Iowa. Shall have the same force and effect with respect to said area. As if zoning map and all notations, references and other information shown thereon, whereas fully set forth described therein. The original said amendment is properly attested and is a filed city clerk, the city of Eldridge, Iowa. Section two repeal where all ordinances and resolutions and personal ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, the effective date, the ordinance shall take upon effective as passage of publication as provided by law. Do I hear a motion for.
So. So.
Motion by Peters, second by Doc, read. To approve the first reading ordinance two thousand twenty-three twenty-one for rezoning, terminal second edition from. R three multiple family to plan residential overlay, roll call.
Peters.
Hi.
Daughery.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Blackwell.
Hi.
Chief.
Hi.
Seven consideration, resolution twenty-three, twenty-six waiving the fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four student built North Scott. Definitely calling you on this real quick.
Um, yes, I wasn't here the last time they built a student home, um, but. Uh, I was told that the fees were waived. Um, we had a request from, uh, the North Scott School District. Student built home, uh, program to waive the fees again this time. Uh, so I followed the pattern from the last. Resolution and you see that for you.
I think it's a great program they do up there and it helps community hits of and by. People in the community, so. I'm all in favor of supporting that, keeping that going, I'm going.
Uh, you're talking about a total of twenty-four hundred dollars, I should have mentioned that.
That's teaching, giving, and trade, and it's gonna benefit us and all.
Is it in the ground or rendition, correct?
It is in the first, yeah.
Yeah. If not, they're working.
Get a basically, yeah, kind of cat a corner from the backyard, but, yeah, it is exactly.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-six, waiting fees for this twenty-three, twenty-four student home, whereas North Scott schools will be participating. In the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four student bill home to be built. For nineteen London Lane in Eldridge, Iowa, and. Whereas the student built one coordinator has contacted the city of Eldridge and requested that the fees. Student built will be waived, therefore be resolved as city council, city of Eldridge, Iowa, that the fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Soon bill home shall be waived as approved the seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-three.
Take the motion of first resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, it's red.
Second that.
Motion by Dr. Second by Peters to approve resolution two thousand. Six, waving thieves for the twenty-three, twenty-four student bill phone. Roll call.
Daughery.
Hi.
Sorry.
Blackwell. All right.
Chief.
Hi.
Peters.
Hi.
Seven consideration of the rest. Resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-seven, approving the final plot of American acres. Yep, they call you again, that's the one that was split, correct?
Uh, yes, Mayor, so, um, again, we're looking at, uh. A lot just north of Mollo Oil. Um, former Mollo Mollo Oil, um, it was split into two parcels, now the northernmost lot. Uh, they're requesting to be split into three. Um, all of the lot requirements meet city code. And, uh, we've added, uh, created new easements for utilities around, uh, each one of those lots. Um. So. Really nothing special about this.
Yeah. This is the third rendition of this person.
This would be at least the second rendition of this parcel, yeah.
Cause the one thing they're gonna put three lots on the north and third.
Yeah, that could be, I get. But this is the final, and this was approved by plan zone, it's Thursday, so.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-seven. Proving final flat for American acre second edition, whereas a final flat for American acre second edition has been submitted by Eldridge Industrial Developers LLC. And our developer, the property had, whereas the final plat had been found to be substantial. In accordance with the funding and requirements, the city of Eldridge has been approved by the elders planning and zoning commission. On August third, two thousand twenty-three, now therefore be resolved. That the city council of city of Eldridge hereby approved final flat for American acres, second edition passed approved the seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-three. Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash. Twenty-seven, improving the final plot of American acre second edition.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by chief to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-seven, roll call.
Collins.
Hi.
Blackwell.
Hi.
Chief.
Hi.
Peters.
Hi.
Consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty, approving final plat of CRST first edition.
After me, I'm calling you again, please.
Uh, yes, Mayor, um. Uh, so this is the old CRST lot, um, containing that, uh, triangle, uh, that we were talking about earlier. Um, what you see here is a plat that's combining three lots, um. The northern three lots into one, uh, creating new easements and vacating old easements that were run through the property that are no longer needed. Um, and then now the. They're retaining one lot, uh, down at the bottom, uh, that has a building on it, is a separate lot. Um, this was reviewed, uh, by city staff and city engineer. And by planning and zoning, uh, last Thursday. And we are recommending approval. And we've, you know, you'll see that we created new utility easements around the perimeter of the property. Um. There's some drain adjustments that were added where the, uh. Bons are slated to go for future development.
Thank you, Jeff. Consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty, proving final file of. CRST first edition. Whereas the final plat for CRST first edition has been submitted by Bankland LLC, owner developer of the property. Whereas the final plat has been found to be substantially in accordance with the planning requirements in the city of Eldridge and has now been approved by the elders planning and zoning commission. On August third, two thousand twenty-three, now therefore be it resolved. That the city council of the city of Eldridge hereby approved the final flat for CRST first edition. Hasn't approved the seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-three. Do I hear motion to approve the final plat of. CRST first edition.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Second by chief to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-eight, approving the final plan. CRST first edition, roll call.
Blackwell.
Hi.
Chief.
Hi.
Peters.
Side.
Daughery.
Hi.
Seven nine. Consideration of approving sidewalk assessment waiver for EPOD properties LLC. Definitely call you again, please.
Um, thanks, Mayor, um, this is the first of two sidewalk waivers, uh, we'll see tonight, uh, by neighboring properties. Uh, this one is part of the Black Hawk Trails. Industrial Park, uh, it is located, uh, with access, uh, straight off a Black Hawk Trail. On the north side of that industrial park, um, and a neighbor to, uh, CRST. Property which was granted a sidewalk waiver a meeting or two ago. Uh, there are currently no other sidewalks in this industrial park.
Thank you, Jeff. Looking for motion to approve the sidewalk assessment waiver for EPOD properties LLC.
This, we want to say, yeah, put it in the future.
It is, uh, that is what the waiver says, and, uh, they were told that the waiver would need to be recorded, just like the other ones have been.
I would make the group subject to it being recorded. Absolutely, okay. Make motion approved, uh, subject to appearing. Be recorded at reporters' offices. Second.
Motion by Dr. Second by Blackwell to approve the sidewalk assessment for EPOD property LLC. And to be recorded if I'm any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ace, ice habit. Seven J consideration, approving assessment waiver for Arcade J L L C. Yep, I'll call you again.
Uh, we'll just continue our way west in the next two parcels. Uh, in the same industrial park where there's currently no sidewalks, uh, requesting a sidewalk waiver.
And group, subject to, subject to it being recorded at the state county reporters' office. Second. In other words, if they don't record it, it's not valid, but put in sidewalks.
My doctor, second by Peters to approve the sidewalk assessment waiver for Arcade J LLC. And get recorded at the town. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ace, have it. Seven K consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-three, twenty-nine, awarding a contract. For the two thousand twenty-three elder street pad, street patching plan project one. Brian, I seen a high mountain cloud there. Yep. Um, we're gonna open public hearing. On the street project, actually. Do I hear motion for that? Second.
Second.
Motion by chief, second by council, but publicly caring. It's a favor, say aye.
All right.
Jim Scott, uh, let me call this from the bottom of the floor. Uh, I just want to point out to council and mayor that, uh. Small screen closure. That, uh, small stream closures. Be beat to death. West, West Lincoln Road, intersection, I talked to. Our maintenance that, uh, the intersection of, uh, Lincoln and South First. It's beat up terribly every time it rains. Both sides of the intersection are dire need. You don't see it mentioned. Uh, we do have a temporary catch program, but it's, uh. Uh, not to be negative, but, um, it's, uh, our maintenance people. Uh, it's, it's, it's only, it's only fair and I, I get that. I'd like to see that added to the program. Uh, it's, it's on the, it's on the east side of, on Lincoln Road. Uh, that traffic is becoming more and more, um. Increasing on a daily weekly basis. Uh, especially since the new housing has gone in on. On run a little addition there on the south side of Lincoln Road. Uh, and we need to address that road in a more permanent fashion in the future. Um, that, that was one of the reasons why I came to meeting tonight. Not anything to do with utility court, but, um. So that's sort of, I, I know there's two, 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 two programs. I don't know if that can be incorporated in that program, one or two. So I, I just didn't see that, so. Thank you.
Well, him the. The patching plan we're, um, approving tonight, hopefully are the two plans would be for concrete patching. Hey. That's what I'm talking. That's anyway, those are for concrete catching. So to answer your question, I do have a price, uh. To repair. West Lincoln Road, but it would be a seal code that we currently have, which I think we all agree is probably not. A permanent issue or a permanent fix for that road, but at least would buy us some time. We could budget or figure out how to maybe improve that to the next level. So that is, um, I had given that to Nevada already. I just. We wanted to see what happened tonight, prices. Through for the passion with concrete, then we will go bring that to the council next meeting.
And Jeff, I'd like to point out that the east side. Of South First Lincoln Road is country. And it's been patched with asphalt and it's, it's blown it too. I'm just saying that there is concrete in there and. So I, both sides of the intersection need to be addressed. We've, uh, taken care of. The middle part of town extremely well. It's just that it's gonna be another major intersection down there. We need to address it. So, and, and I, I would just, I was hoping that would be included. In, in this program and that's all I'm pointing out. I, I understand budget and understand the, I just thought it great for constant. Thank you very much.
The twenty-sixth, I think.
Yeah, so I knew about it.
Yeah.
Some of the rest she had to.
What will be checked in which is the church. My promotion of closed public hearing. Second. Motion by Dr. Second by Peters post-public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Seven K consideration resolution twenty-three dash twenty-nine awarding contract for tragic project one. Resolution two thousand twenty-three twenty-nine, whereas bid for the two thousand twenty-three elder street patching plan project one. Were opened by Shire Henry Incorporated on August thirty. Thousand twenty-three and where does Centennial Contractors Incorporated of Tolding, Illinois has submitted the lowest bid for the project. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of elders Iowa. Number one, that the contract for the twenty-three two thousand twenty-three elder street patching plan project one. It's hereby awarded to Centennial Contractors Incorporated of Moleme, Illinois, an amount of one hundred. Thirty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars. Number two, that the mayor and clerk are authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute this contract. Pass and prove the seventh day of August two thousand twenty-three.
You might be heavy or use them in the best for street patching. I don't, that, that ain't business on a premier.
For street patching, they've been involved in some private projects. But they are local and they're one from over in the region.
Have you been? Even though what gets been done or your knowledge. Nevada, are they acceptable?
Yes.
Completed timely manner, so forth.
Yeah, yeah, they have their reputation for doing things some in. That means in the time frame.
There's a lot for, got you on my side of the river. Right. So this. There's no further questions in, I'll go ahead and take a motion for approval. Centennial.
Nice, thank you. Motion by Blackwell, second by chief. To approve resolution two thousand twenty-three twenty-nine awarding contract for the twenty-three. Other street patching project one. Roll call.
Chief.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Great.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi. Hi. Here, this question for the benefit of the public here, uh, could you describe what's in package number one and package number two, please? Cause it's not listed on this information here at this point and I gave it to you later, but. I got to the public.
Well, brass meaning. This broken up and there was a map actually. Of what streets were going to be.
Right, but these are two packages. So which one is, what's in what? The, uh, McLaren Road stuff was put to bed, uh, and I speak out soon.
Are you right now, pardon? My idea of separately like.
That is, that's correct.
Try to accelerate the progress.
And I'm good with that. It just, but what's in what package?
One. As Black Hawk Trail Plan, East Franklin Street, Sixth Street, West Davis Street. As Iowa Street, First and Price, First and Davies, East Price, Seventh Street and Donahue, Seventh Street, West Leclerc Road. West Price Street grading, First Street and Davis Street grading, Donahue Street grading.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Package one, Marty, would just be straight patching. Package two, we put everything that would require store work, so I'm sure pipe work in, good, dirty, kind of, oh, good. Thank you for that.
Good. Thanks for the expense. Then we're pushing, right. Hello.
Somebody open the public hearing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, oh, make more sure it's public hearing, uh.
Two thousand twenty-three street pad, you mean plan project number two.
Well, turn back very second by Collins to open public hearing. Two thousand twenty-three dash thirty, you're cutting project number two.
Closest to no public town and then we discuss some.
Okay.
Motion by Dr. Second by Chief to post public hearing, the resolution two thousand twenty-three thirty. On, I see project number two. Consideration of resolution two thousand twenty-three thirty awarding contract for the twenty-three elder street patching project number two. Whereas bids for the twenty-two thousand twenty-three elder street patching project two. Were opened by Shire Henry Incorporated on August third, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC of Cascade Iowa has submitted the lowest bid for the project. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of elders Iowa's number one. That the contract for the two thousand twenty-three elder street patching plan project number two. Is hereby awarded to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC. Of Cascade Iowa, an amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Number two, the mayor's city clerk are authorized to sign any document necessary to execute this contract. That's improved to the seventh day of August two thousand twenty-three.
I think that's a great amount, looking at the budget. Yeah, I have no issues with Cascade for completing. Items are having come back, so. It's all. Further discussion, I'd like to make a motion. Or two ball.
Okay.
Motion by Blackwell, second by chief to approve awarding the contract in the two thousand twenty-three three patching. Project number two, roll call.
Yes.
Hi.
Doctor.
Hi.
Brian.
Last one.
All right.
Bye.
It's a quick question, Brian, how? How's, uh, the budget? Look, I think this is, this we. In, in good shape that this initial stuff.
Um, we're doing very well. Majority of my, a lot of this patching project actually was budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. It didn't get completed. I think we waited a little bit for the clear road intersection to get done, so we didn't close down more streets. So that money is basically been rolling. Each year in the road use fund, so that's what we're taking out. So. Uh, Martha and Nevada, what's those numbers? There's still a good balance even after this project's done.
So just looking ahead, Mr. Skidell's concerned that the. Possibilities to address some other issues. Certainly not what we budgeted for.
There should be plenty of money to address other issues.
Thank you.
That's a consideration.
Well, yes, is there a drop in date on this, on this contract? I'm, 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 I'm not being a smarty, I'm just saying that for future, but you know, from the public. Um, I'd like, I'd like to see a. closure date and if not. What do we do about it? Or is there a finer penalty? We don't, in other words, we're gonna drag, we're gonna drag this on into next spring, next summer, you know? Can't get through with this in the winter, I don't mean that.
Well, there's some arcs of the project that stay on the set of plans that must be completed before. This fall, November. Those are the ones we prioritized. To help get some more bids, we did allow them to finish the second part of it. By the end of next May, so. Uh, we also have discretion to stop the contractor if cold weather comes. Or whatever, so they just don't keep going. Shouldn't be allowed to, so, um. We. Try to take in consideration a good timeframe and at least getting the most bids we could, so that's what we did.
I, maybe part of your concern, a lot of people's concerns is with the. First personally clear intersection and stuff that, uh. You know, it's contract work days, it's not calendar days and. Uh, a lot of people don't understand that and they look at it because that was done. Within the contractual requirements, even though. People thought it should have been done a lot sooner, just looking at the calendar, so.
And we try to be reasonable on our time frames. If we get too restrictive, it just cause to the project of.
Seven and consideration authorized in the elders police department to purchase and outfit a new squad to replace the canine squad that came out of community policing funds at a cost of. Sixty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Joe. Yes, Mayor. So what we're requesting is, uh, use our community police bond to replace, uh. By that we put in this. Squad itself through Carl Chevrolet, which is sitting in the lot right now is forty thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven thou. And, um. Conversations with Carl Chevrolet, four-two-four and, uh, Celtic. Celtic has that greater price for the update, which is twenty thousand, nine hundred seventy-twelve. So. I still was that they would be able to get to a new squad that fitted into as sooner. Chevrolet four-two-four kind of this because we're. Got something on static belt for a beach thing right now. Um, yeah. Please find the company's staffs.
This is to replace a car that got taken out of regular service that became the canine car. To put another car back in service, correct, Joe?
Correct. What happened with that, that car?
That is now the canine car. So we took a regular car and converted it to the canine card outfitted for the dog. So this is to replace. That car that got taken out of regular. Service that became the canine car. And we paid for it with canine buns and the community police.
Okay, to replace canine squad.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not to make this into a new.
Yeah.
Yes.
But what probably we did.
What we did and we took a charter dress. That we had, which. I thought really looked over and we had it looked over by. Uh, four-two-four to see how well the squad is gonna hold up and. That squad in great shape, so therefore we outfitted that for the canine. Soon and later. And now we need to replace that squad. But, you know, it's fun. Go ahead and move forward with your permission.
No, it's hard work. It's, it's misleading. Look like that we have a canine squad and we're gonna get it by a new canine squad and convert the whole canine back and stuff. So that, that's where the confusion lies, you know, but. Thing, yeah, items are, hmm, work, work.
Okay, I.
Put it there.
So canine squad, we needed that right away.
Right.
Because he started his training the thirty-first of July.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we needed that car for the, for the canine.
Well, yeah, I mean, just on that canine. Comment in there made it confusing. It doesn't need to be in there that this. Requesting for some purchase and upfitting new squad because you are in need of. A squad to meet your current requirements. Whether the old one was grass destroyed, stone. Converted canine. Didn't need to be in there that when it said it was like. Okay, we just got a canine, so why are we outfitting?
But this, this money that we're spending in its car. Will come out of the city, but it comes out his.
That, oh, the money we're spending?
No. Comes out of.
No, you just said the money we're spending.
No, we're not spending anything. No spending.
Okay.
His, his. Donation.
I'm taking this book and you said we are spending.
Yeah, the reason for listing coming out of the canine buns is because the donation funds are raised for a specific item. They have to be used for that specific item. So we're just tracking for. Uh, checking where those funds are being purchased. They were raised for a canine and canine unit. But we ended up taking a used patrol car for the canine unit that was in the regular service patrol. So now we're using the donation funds to purchase. A squad to replace. That. So we're tracking how those canine donation funds were raised because when they're raised for a certain purpose, they can only be used for that purpose for, for auditing reasons.
You have canine unit in.
Right, but we think.
Where there's different other instructions of other.
Right, but we still have to track patrol car that the taxpayers paid for for regular patrol back into that squad. So we didn't just take away a, a vehicle that the. The taxpayers pay for.
Chief, the proposed decal on that. Is that gonna be somewhere to? Would we have been witnessing now regarding the ghost lettering or is this going to, because there's been. There's been some individuals which commented all that as to what I like to know that my, my police. All there for me when I'm walking through and that's, that's a valid argument, but I'll also too, there's sometimes where we don't let the bad guys know too. That we're parked down the street as well.
And that's where the ghost lettering. There's a misconception that the ghost lettering actually pops out more and actually makes the place more, just. Out there, but I don't want to make them so visible. For anybody to see, it's a safety issue for them because it really stands out. Uh, because officers do have a lot of their stalls that are out of the act of. They're really delayed, so. Those. Letters actually stand out more. So that's the turkey sport. But we have been looking and we're still gonna be looking at different designs and actually start. Looking at putting. Their own details on it. So that's something I'm still working on, we'll make sure.
Church, yeah, thank you.
Promotion to approve the police department to purchase. Yes. Yes, fine.
Believe it's me, um. First of all, I just agree with your concept. We can take money out of money donated to the dog by our city. It took almost thirty thousand dollars. I don't have the fund to upgrade the current.
We took almost thirty thousand dollars out of the fund to upgrade the current. First of all. Second of all, I don't care what fund it's in, if it's in the donation fund, G R F funds, it's still taxpayers' money at this point. Good. Second of all, how many squad cars do we have? Everyone wants the canine.
Yes.
So we have six squad cars. And at any given time, it's usually three people on the street at the time.
I'm thinking about five.
Six parts. I don't think we need enough. If we do need another cars, why are we buying a Cadillac or sixty one thousand six hundred and sixty four dollars and twelve cents when we just went through the process of buying the two chargers for this amount or less?
Because we can't get chargers any longer. But for toddlers, two of them. And yes, channel yourself. Our just your badge charge that was sold out to an Italian company. Which they ceased all orders for that.
Was there better also? Excuse me if I'm wrong, but was there discussion of theory as to whether you're looking at the resident requirements and moving that from a thirty mile radius that officers who live outside city limits, they could take a squad car or vehicle home with them in case they had to respond to an emergency? There was nothing like that as well, or for the purpose of additional?
It's still in the city. The only one that gets to take is home.
I mean, I don't want to be spending sixty one thousand dollars just for spending. I think that's left vehicles. At some point in time, we got to tighten up our budget. We just can't keep spending, spending, spending. It's a, we have to break this down to, is it a want or is it a need? My opinion is that's a want.
As a citizen, I want the car to be placed that we took out of service and gave it to a canine. So let's say I don't see a problem spending forty thousand seven hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars or forty thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Sixty one thousand.
No, not for the car. You're talking about the equipment. The town. I'm talking about the car.
It's an expense, total expense.
Excuse me. Mister Doc, Doc, Doc. But we still got to equip that car. But this isn't, this isn't taxpayer money. This is donations and people are saying this is what it's going for. So what we're doing is we've already, he's already bought the car. We took one out of the service and now we're 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 down one. So we're not adding anymore. We're just getting back to where we need to be. So as a citizen, I want to see all the cars we need. And I think we need them. And if we get a new car for this price and it's not costing a citizen anything, that's the best way to do it.
Well, my understanding of this whole thing, this car was not taken out of service. It was doing the same thing. Now it just has a canine right of. So I I don't understand why that was not taken out of service. That is still out there and technically the the people, citizens that wanted this uh, donate the money for a canine unit, which half thirty thousand was spent on that already out of that fund. So I don't know how we can use those funds that they raised for a canine to buy a new squad. So this is to replace a patrol car. The the K nine program, when it was put into motion was to Joe's on a fundraiser to buy a car, get the dog, pay for all the training and the annual expenses moving forward. They successfully did that with all their fundraising. So we took our best Tahoe that we had, which would have had been bought and sent it out to four two fours. He got it converted to be a canine equipped car for Marty, the patrol dog. So this car was fundraised for. We took our best Tahoe, which was what the canine was for. So this is to replace the car that they took out of the regular fleet. Because at the time even they wouldn't have had a car outfitted for when the dog was ready to hit the street. So they took an existing patrol car for the canine program to pay for a car. So we, the city, the police department basically donated an existing best Tahoe to the program and the program is replacing the car the the police department donated that was a regular patrol car.
That's that what the money was donated for. To buy every patrol car display board.
First of all, we didn't donate anything to the city. We just repurposed that vehicle. My point is we have five vehicles and a canine. We have three on the street most of the time. Why do we need another squad to begin with? Is there anything wrong with that money sitting in the bank to use for some other purpose, either training for the canine, vet bills, housing? I mean, that's to me the purpose of the donations to maintain that dog. Thirty two thirty thousand, a hundred and some thousand dollars raised to fit our best Tahoe we have. We didn't donate. It still belongs to the city. It's still on the street. It's just got a dog.
Yeah, so not down the squad and they didn't donate money to buy a new squad.
Original original plans was take that money and buy buy a brand new. So it's it's what my understanding is. But due to due to the fact and the momentum, it kind of gained and this this got before us with the canine and it came before us quicker than what we originally thought. Also with the canine squad as well, that vehicle right now does get to go home with the officer. Correct? So that canine is always on patrol until canine officer and the dog is present. So something may go down where we could be short another vehicle if needed, maybe if correct unless unless chief gets on and say, we we need you ASAP. And then that timeframe is going to slow down regarding a proposed emergency. Unless we have this right now, it's in the fleet and it's it's usable and officer is behind the wheel. So so I can see with that would be a benefit to to purchase that since we already took one off the street.
So I'm figuring we have four or five other squads sitting.
To give a prime example, one of our squads is just out for two weeks. That's an issue.
I'm not willing to spend sixty seven thousand dollars because it ain't convenient for two weeks.
I'd be more than happy to reach out to all of the donors. That's the government's money that's.
Yes, but I guess from a financial side of it, you know, they're not going to get any cheaper. They're only going to blow up. And what we're doing is, you know, it's not really even um, a cheap vehicle. It's actually going out to be put on the street again as he's putting all the accessories that the uh, truck that we took out of service back into this truck. So I don't see where we'd be saving any money waiting. We're just being paying more for the next. Would like the county to buy, put it in storage, go to. That's your argument. It's not maybe any cheaper, but I just don't think we need it.
Your hand, it's not our money.
Of course, why do you say that?
Because it's not. We're donated.
Who did they?
With the canine.
Eldridge Police Department.
Canine.
Is the canine not part of the Eldridge Police Department?
They donated to the canine.
Is it in?
So we have to use it for the canine. Okay, so that's what we're doing. We're replacing the squad that we took out of service. And we're replacing that with a new one for the city of Eldridge. To me, that's that's a no brainer. We're getting a new squad. People donated money for.
Well, you just said it was donated for a canine and then you turn around and say, we're spending a new squad.
It's replacing. It's replacing the squad that we took out of service that.
It's not out of service. It's got a dog in it now.
Place it with the money that these taxpayers paid for that car. We took it out of service. Now we're replacing the car.
Why is it out of service?
Excuse me?
Why is the car out of service?
Because it's only used by one officer. You can't use it with two or three officers. It's got to be used one. One officer can only.
Still in service.
Well, evidently, you don't have any idea what the police department does. Okay, I.
I don't have twenty nine years of experience, Mr. President, so no.
You don't have twenty two years.
Oh, twenty two.
Okay. I know what the police department does. I know what what they need.
If you can get, you know, all the donors that they want to replace, buy a new squad car, that that's.
My permission to buy a car uh, as a donor.
This company is responsible for the fiscal oversight of that money regardless since taxpayers are going. Can't spend a dime of the money without council approval here. Buy a car, make a motion, see if it passes.
I I I'd like to call for the question.
Consideration the purchase of a new squad. Be decent plan.
I'd like to make motion. Buy a new squad with. Nation money.
Go here, second.
I second my motion.
Motion by Chief second by Collins to approve the purchase of a new squad and outfit it community leasing funds for a cost of now fifteen sixty one thousand six hundred and sixty four dollars and twelve cents. All those in paper say aye.
Uh, just before I'm just I'd say, I'm all in favor of that, that, you know, spending that money instead of other city funded. I just want to make sure that we're not misrepresenting. We that was donated by people to buy a canine car. If they're fine with buying another squad to replace the one we put in this, I'm I'm fine with that. But I just want to know that all those people that donated are are fine with that. I don't think that is our decision to make. That money was raised for one purpose. We're saying we're going to use that money for a different purpose. I don't think we have the authority to to do that. It's a canine account and we're going to buy it for something that's not for the canine. And it's just that technicality, but that's the what the law says as fiscal managers. That's what we're supposed to do.
But it's to replace a car that will not be available twenty four hours a day anymore. They got to take.
That was never talked about when we approved passing this this other car, you know, to the canine. It doesn't matter what it's for. It's not for the canine vehicle. That's what the money was donated for. If they can clear it up and say, okay, it was donated to replace to get a new car to replace, I'm fine with that. I, that's why they raised the money and spent it on the canine, but I don't think you know, if I donate for the canine unit and we have a canine unit and then all of a sudden I see they're just buying another squad car, I may or may not be happy with that. It's just I don't see how we can arbitrarily take money out of a canine funding and say, well, we're going to use it for something else. We're going to override all these people that donated it with that purpose in mind. I don't think I have the authority to do that. It can get a.
Yeah, when I have time, slides or something.
Obviously, obviously, this is going to get some press and individuals can contact and write in or contact you chief for the police or the North Scott Press to give support if there's any miscommunication perceived to be. So yes, with that being with that being said, you're ready to vote then?
Yes, I mean, I have a problem with it if we can say that that's what I'm as a citizen to show to to find out. Well, I don't want to delay things because of that either. I just but we got to do things correctly.
Let's give opportunity and order table.
Yes, why didn't you figure out what the cost was of trade at Tahoe? The city has paid that cost out of one budget. By the way, you reimburse that back to the city money, take the money out of the canine unit. Effectively effectively pay for those.
It's an accounting trick.
Plus the Tahoe as well. We have to reimburse the last that we had during the time. Can we update that?
That's one way to do that. It costs twenty thousand dollars to eat out that. Ah, they improve it. You have sixty thousand dollars in your fund. So at least allocate twenty of that fund. If you're trying to tailor money for the improvement.
Well, I thought that was already paid for out of that.
It was. We would be reimbursing the general fund for the cost of the Tahoe that we took out of the patrol. That's what we would be needing to reimburse to really make it balanced from what we took from the city or what the what the canine donations funds took from the city was a Tahoe. They paid for the outfitting themselves. But now they're wanting to reimburse that Tahoe because that was supposed to be paid for the canine bunch of things. They just took up the vehicle from the city. So they want to put that money in the form of the squad that they took out back into.
Well, that was that. Fifty one thousand or whatever.
The forty thousand is the Tahoe, the twenty one thousand is the outfitting.
Either way, it's shown. Still spending sixty one thousand dollars. My question is, is it a good for me?
So we have a motion to second right in the floor.
What's the motion technically?
I'll I'll withdraw my motion till Joe gets back with when he comes back.
So so we're going to table this till Joe finds out what the donors say about that.
I don't want to delay things here.
Hey. Collins.
All right.
Blackwell.
At this point, we're at the same rate.
Chief.
Aye.
Peters.
Nay, don't get clarification.
Chief, do his due diligence and we can hear back from community members as to so.
Joe, I don't think you get every single thing. Just you can't go and survey this general opinions. I just don't want I don't think there will be any, but that's not for us to decide. It's just by fucking belief. I don't want all the things up. We look at the Florida.
It's not true.
And moving on to seven and consideration to authorize the purchase of a mower on street departments at a cost of five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Out of the budget, I would throw use fund for a dump truck. The remaining funds in January would be a replacement for future dump truck purchase. Brian, since you're here to explain that one thing.
Yep, quick as I can. So we busted this year, you know, you guys approved a used dump truck on Scott County secondary roads. They called me and said they're not going to get their new dump truck at least till the fourth quarter of twenty twenty four. So um, they're. At least till the fourth quarter of twenty twenty four, so, um, their question is, do we still want that truck? Or? About them just, you know, can we just move on for something different, so. I think. We owe them an answer that, you know, I, I don't think I want to wait till twenty twenty four to buy that truck, but, um. It was either buy the truck or. Buy some small equipment, but remember, so they said it's either or. We don't want the dump truck, we're not. So I just want to take five thousand of that money. Purchase this mower that got thrown out of the budget. We saved the rest of that money. Uh, forward it to the next fiscal year to help pay for a dump truck that we can look for. At timely fashion, and maybe add on to that, you know, that fund. But make sure it doesn't get lost, we don't spend any more of it, the staffs have spent five thousand eight hundred. Or more that we couldn't purchase and save the rest for a future day.
Friends, I would say tell the county that we'd be interested in looking at it maybe. Next fall, but keep looking for other trucks, because we don't know how much additional wear and tear and damage we put on that. Track, you know, both drive, train and chassis between now and then. So we really can't say one way or another, we'd still be on this.
And I will, and that's kind of what Keith and I told the county, you know. Just how they go out for bid on their truck, they need to know if they need to reserve the right to. Sell to us or not, but, um, I think they can still do both.
Okay.
By Blackwell, second by Chiefs to approve the purchase of more for street departments that have cost not to exceed five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Say aye. I have it. Especially in consideration on recommended amendments, the permitted use in zone district ordinances for presentation to the finding is only work. Jeff, I call you for that.
Oh, yeah, let me get caught up here. Oh, I believe this was presented by Councilman Blackwell. Correct, you were wanting just to re, kind of review the uses again, commercial districts, I believe. And so you, I believe, Councilman received an email with, uh. Permitted uses and uses in review of commercial district. Uh, just to. Uh, see if you would like to, if you think that needs further review, like land zoning, that's. True, listen up.
Yeah, there's proof without any. Too much detail, it was brought to my attention on, on Facebook and by a few residents regarding the whole establishment coming in next to Hall of Fame. Which. I understand their, their concerns with that, there's already four establishments by already similar project. Product. Schools took upon themselves to install detectors. To try to curb this, and then we're going to open up, we're going to allow this place to come in and, and say, hey, kids, go ahead. Use us, it's okay, on the main drag in Eldridge. Do we really need this, and as a council, things that kind of slipped underneath our noses before. And I want to ensure that we're looking at everything in due diligence, and as, as a council, if we feel that something is unjust, unsafe for our community. That we have a right to say, no, put the brakes on this. So this is why this is proper.
And take some of these, eh, to. Put on permitted use, sorry, be only. We can also look at, um, I don't know, we have to have legal advice on. If we can limit density of them in our community. Or if we can put restrictions similar to also maintain. Facilities. Right now, there's only one place in town that'll go on us, Southbound sixty one between. Sixty one, it's got part through. By the time we took parameters on distance from schools, churches. That's something we can do with some of these other businesses. We have to probably get legal advice to see if that's permissible, we could do that.
And what we can change, of authorization we have, what don't we have, but it's. Distance is a long message, I feel. And to find out about it, kind of. A lot of times that occurs with, with, with council, you know, we don't, I don't hear about it, or the councilman, we don't hear about it, it's a rumor. Or there's a sign, you go by, the sign, oh, this is coming in town, okay, I wasn't aware of that, so. We need more communication as to what. And if we feel that this. Any type of project is going to come here, which is going to be ill. For the community, send a bad rep, negativity. Add on to addictions and, and, and. And your health. Then why would we promote that within our community? On the main drag, say, here, here, um. This is here. Part eight. This four or five, this guy was starting reading, that's those these devices. Why do we need a separate one? It, it doesn't send a good message regarding the signal network. And, 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 and what we uphold with the safety and values of our community. Hey, we as a council, I still, we need hand say as to these matters to avoid. Situations like this, now and future. So, so yes, so definitely, if this needs to be taken, we need. If this needs to come before a committee, uh, legal counsel involved. What needs to be done and what other communities have done, if anything, it's. I feel the sooner the better, this needs to take place.
I agree with you in, in principle, it's, uh, like certain has to be looked at from, uh, you know, a, a legal standpoint again. On discriminatory practices, you know, arbitrarily allow. What business is in as opposed to other businesses, so we, we. Got to look at doing, how, how it can be worth it in the, in a manner that there's not repercussions for certain.
If you agree, I'll forward, I'll give to Jeff, and specific details, just, and. So let's just other municipalities to see how they treat it, see, see what's out there.
Absolutely.
It might seem starting.
Right, we just don't need a saturation, you know, and encourage. Partaking others, especially the school districts, spend all this money to try to curb this too, so. Yeah, so thank you, thank you for hearing me out and understanding and, and I hope that we can work together. But thank you.
Motion for Jeff to, um. Research other communities and see how they're free, specific issues.
Motion by Black, second by Blackwell. All those in favor? Nay, I have it.
Thank you.
Yes, it's there.
Um, I don't have much of that, it's, I know, uh, last year, by some fair, we tensed up those streets. That travel seal on GSP done. And if you remember, then retaining all money back, so they have agreed to come and redo those, uh, seventeenth and eighteenth. Of this month. So that's coming. The, uh, Councilman Blackwell's question, we did meet Nevada and. Tony Root and myself for starting a new CIP for street projects, so. It hasn't died off since we last talked, we're just trying to get organized before we, uh, get with the committee.
Brian, and what streets are you going to redo? With the, uh, on seventeenth and nineteenth, that would be west down the U Street and north eight. There were ones that were redone. They were done last summer, uh, they had a malfunction machine. Worked very well, so they'd agreed to come back and redo it. Like there's like a stripe, and there's a stripe, and then part of North Fifth.
One thousand plus one.
Correct. A sign for a bag.
Are you going to post signs for those neighbors to know, or?
Yes.
Code red or something, on, on that purple street on those things.
I'm going to, typically when we'll do that, probably. I scheduled it for Thursday in case it rains, so we can do it Friday, but. But we do door hangers at least Monday or Tuesday, for that week.
Whatever it's called.
Um, just real quickly, we, uh, went wide with A P timing attendance system on this pay period, so I will, I will let you know how that goes. Um, the Wyatt Work Program went effective on August first, so we've got quite a few employees, um, I'll take them for it. I've joined it exactly, but we have, uh, quite a few that were interested in, enrolled in that program. And we have our U R A consultation meeting with taxiing agencies and not have any objections, so we'll, um, keep moving forward on that schedule and bring it to you. The next, the council meeting, so with that.
What do you? Well, I wanted to share with the council that I found a few items that were being done correctly or not done. At all. Number one, uh, the city of Elders have not been sending, has never sent ten ninety nine tax forms out to our vendors. So, uh, what we do is, uh, we started sending ninety nine forms to our vendors and we've gotten a really good response, so. Starting this year, we'll send out ten thousand. Cause that's, sending ten million is a big violation with the IRS. So, uh, second, uh, I found that some of the A C H vendors. Are automatically debiting, you know, their payment without sending us an invoice prior to. Debiting the accounts. Payment, so I'm working on that, reaching out to all these vendors and, you know, having them send us invoices before. Uh, before they actually debit our account. Also, uh, once we get these invoices, all these A C H, uh, payments will be put through our E K system. So they show up on our bill list, because it's right now, they are not being included on our bill list. Um, the other thing, the third item was that, um, most of our journal entries are being made and we are not. Saving any backup or support for them, which puts us in a little bit of a. That spot, if we should ever get audited, we would never have any, we, we would never be able to show an auditor. Why we made that journal entry. And obviously, it opens up, you know. A can of worms, because anybody can make journal entries and, but we don't have. Anything to support them, and we would be in that situation. As now I've created a folder on our track drive and when any other staff member splits in the journal. And we will save that in there, so we have that as a backup, going forward.
Thank you so much, all kind of detail, we. We're hoping you will provide, so we appreciate that.
Need to follow up, yeah.
Yes, well, those ten ninety nines, is that for any contractor that's making.
Paid over six, six hundred dollars or more for service. They will receive a ten ninety nine. And any legal fees or any type of medical fees will receive a ten ninety nine.
Okay, perfect, and, and then the backup with the journal entry, that. Maybe, you know, possibly it's associated with that, or is that something?
It's internal.
Yeah.
And it just, basically like I made a journal lunch at the other day to correct them. And payroll error, and I got my backup, you know, the city administrator's email, requesting it. And, uh, yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, both of you, appreciate it, thank you so much.
Sir, how many A C H payments do you have a month?
I'm working on right now, because number one, our employer taxes are A C H, so we'll put them in the payroll. Uh, they, uh, to the payable, so you will see them to review on as well. On the bill list. And as of right now, I know that our Tyler Technologies, our software, our company's software. They A C H their payments. And, uh, I was, I've been in communication with them to try to, you know. Find out where their invoices are going, but as of right now, I don't have a frozen office, no.
It's stuff paid on your A C H, when you send them.
One time or another, we approved it. Uh, Sunday approved it, but, uh, they were giving thank information. So.
But we can stop it.
We can stop it. The only thing is, is, uh, they handle our, uh, any type of digital payments, so if we stop it. That creates a problem for our, in our utility billing customers that want to pay.
Three, this, I'm talking about. The other end that we, that are billing us, not who are receiving it.
They bill us for the service.
I think it's, I believe it's a flat.
Did I find any impact, because I can't seem to find what was agreed on. It seems what exactly we're paying. What percentages.
Number nine, closed session for Iowa code twenty one point five one C. To discuss strategy with council managers or president. In words to forge black to be present, which is a manager, those other bodies, but again, that is a regular company.
Thank you.